Yeah, sir.
One in the back.
Actually, we do have two more that are coming. Thanks, sir. Appreciate that.
No problem.
What's that?
Are there still other people coming in?
Actually, we do have two more that are coming.
If you don't mind, I'd like to start.
I'd like to take this to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
So open the meeting to the public. Does anybody have any public comments at this time? There's five minutes per person. Yes?
Thank you. Steve Lambert, I live at the corner of Maple and Academy. I just want to bring to your attention a minor problem. Last week, there was a truck that came down for a delivery at the new site. And we're lucky that he didn't take out the fire hydrant because he took a left or right onto Maple. And just want to bring your attention to the fact that that happens more often than not. Sometimes the trucks don't know where to go. There's a, seems to be a little bit of confusion with some of the drivers as to which gate they go to. So I would suggest that you put up a sign in front of my house on the stop sign. There's one now there before, the little, the stop sign that says private parking or you can't park here or something like that. All I would suggest is that you take that down and put deliveries with an arrow to the front. And that would probably solve part of the problem. But the truck continued to go down Maple Street, took a right either on Chapman or Liberty. So, you know, big tractor trailers are kind of confused as to where the deliveries go. So if it could be directed to the other gate, that'd be helpful.
Okay. And, Harry?
Hi, everybody.
Stand up, yeah, stand up and introduce yourself.
So my name is Harry Achethan. I was here a few weeks ago from Convo Energy and talked about greenhouses, solar power. I would like to ask a question. So we filed for a permit for solar power inside of the premises and greenhouses. And we got a letter back from Tom Rene saying that the village code does not allow for solar power and the village code does not allow for agriculture. So we got this letter, we responded to it. Pointing to the fact that the code does allow, and whatever he said is completely in violation of New York State law. Basically what it says, you cannot put solar power on the premises. You're not allowed to do it. So that is, does that mean that anybody in town cannot put solar power on the roof or in the building? The second thing he talks about is agriculture is not allowed anywhere in the district or in the village, which files against the village code. The village code says agriculture is permitted in every zoning district. So I just want to address everyone here in the room and, and, and the board. We had a meeting three or four weeks ago. I came in, I had full disclosure and transparency about who we are. And I believe in one of the meetings, post that meeting, and I think Brian, it was you and two other people. And there was some lady in the room that basically said, do we know who these people are and do we know this company? Well, we're honest for it. My staff here today, Matt Morris, Cornell retired, Mike Weiser, Cornell retired, Tom, Tom, Slomsky, who is Tom?
Hey.
Captain retired, Melissa Thomas, spouse of a military member. This is an organization that employs veterans. This is an organization that has built its company from the ground up. We have not lied to you guys. But what you guys have done is basically respond back with absolutely zero adherence to the law. Zero. We're talking about investments coming into this community to support this community. We're not here to come in and violate any law. But everything we have proposed to you, we have done it in full transparency. We got this rejection letter. We asked, we asked for a proper rejection letter from the village code officer. That has not come. But this is completely against what the code stands for in this town or the New York State law. You're basically saying, nobody can put a solar panel on the roof. You're saying nobody can grow agriculture in their compound. This is wrong. This is wrong beyond, I have never seen this. I've usually seen this in foreign countries where people are corrupt, but I have not seen this. I have never seen this. Where you have a law firm that's supposed to know the code and here's a list of all the permitted uses. We have analyzed this up and down, left and right. But I don't understand it. I would like some explanation. I mean, do you not like our company? Do you not like veterans working for companies? Do you not want business in this town? And we told you guys before, if we did consume any power and you have concerns about the grid being unstable or the substation not being unstable, we're more than happy to pay for it. We've told you that, Sam. We're not saying things for the sake of telling you what you want to hear, which is basically what you said, Brian, in the last meeting on the twentieth or something, you said. We're saying things that you want to hear. We're, we're willing to do the things that we say that we do. When we say we hire veterans, we do hire veterans. When we say we invest, we do invest. When we say we want to do something and we put it in writing, we tell you, we are willing to do it. But I want to address this in front of the community. The community is being deprived of proper investments and what the investments are going to be for the next 10 years. This is the growth area of pretty much the whole country. But this is wrong. This is absolutely wrong. This is wrong where somebody, and I'm surprised, this is your legal counsel, telling me that agriculture is not allowed when your own code says it's allowed. But this is wrong. Wrong in every which way that I can think of. But I would like some explanation or give, give us a proper hearing in a zoning, in a zoning committee meeting on the 24th. I think it's going to be on the 24th or the 28th. And if you're going to reject it, reject it then with the code officer and tell us why it's being rejected. Or if you need anything more than that, I don't think I need to give you anything more than that because we have given you the plans. We have given you more information than normally people give you. We've given you the plans. We've given you the technical diagrams, the investment amounts, the number of jobs to be created in the community. But this is wrong. And me as an entrepreneur, a guy who's put my own money in, into this company and built it and hiring people for me to see this with absolutely zero backing on it?
Thank you for keeping that in five minutes. That was pretty much five minutes on the line. Tom Rene is cold and sick today. So I don't know.
Is there anybody in the board that can, that can answer this? Or can I get an appointment at the next board meeting in front of the community though? I want to do this in front of the community because I want the community to hear how bad these decisions are with absolutely zero explanation.
Because I didn't even know any legal thinking sent back. I got from, did you send it out today? No, it was yet last week.
It was last week that I sent, forwarded everybody from Harry's response from Tom's letter.
Yeah, and I never got Tom's letter from the village.
It was attached to the document. It was all in the same document.
Oh, it was all in the same document. So that would, because when Tom sent that out, I didn't get it. I wasn't told anything had been sent out. And then we got that reply, I think you sent to everybody else. Uh, is there any other public comment?
What's the process going forward for this site? You know, I was at that meeting and, and Harry was very open. And I'm very surprised to hear that council would do that without informing the board. So what is the normal procedure for getting a hearing and getting the word out or proceeding?
From my understanding, it's code enforcement gets a variance application. It goes to clerk and it goes to, he signs out it some way. So then it's got passed, passed on through, usually through the clerk, to the zoning board of appeals. And then there's a zoning board of appeals hearing. And that's where the zoning board goes through everything, looks at it, decides what, what to do. That's my understanding.
Which is what we understood. But the problem is, it's not even getting to the board. It's not even getting, this is being rejected even before you can even get to them, which is completely against your own policy. So somebody is denying it to buy time to basically make us go away. That's what this is. I've seen this play out in so many different places. I've seen this thing play out. But this is so wrong for the community for somebody on that board to do that. Because apparently there was a meeting last week or a week before after the last meeting I came in. There was some meeting. And that meeting, it was said something like, we've got to shut this thing down. That, that was a rumor, but I, I don't know. But I don't know whether that's true or not. But the bottom line is, this is not process. This is not process. I still don't have a response from the code enforcement, enforcement officer. I still don't, don't understand why this is not even getting to the zoning board.
Do you want me to answer that?
No.
Okay, well, first of all, Harry, let me tell you the process that took place. Your application was submitted to code enforcement officer John Cooper. John Cooper received, received the application for your permit. He forwarded to the town, the village attorney, Tom Rene, for review. Tom Rene reviewed your application and it was based upon Tom Rene's interpretation that he sent out this letter. Just to answer another question that you had, number one is if Tom would have came back and said that the, the application that you applied for is permissible in the village, you would not need to go in front of the zoning board of appeals. The permit application could be processed by the code enforcement officer. It was sent to the village council to review to make sure that it was permissible for this action to take place in the village. So the only way that you would need to go in front of the zoning board of appeals would be if it's not a permitted use within the village and then you would have to apply for a use variance. If that's, if that would be what would be necessary. But at this point in time, nobody can answer these questions because of what the council, the village attorney sent to you in, in response to your, your application. And we can't speak on Tom's behalf because Tom didn't consult with anybody in this room on that letter. Now, his letter was dated, I think, December 27th and your attorney's response was December 28th. Correct me if I'm wrong on those dates. So our attorney sent it out and the day later, he sent a response to what Tom Rene said. And then we had the holiday, so Tom Rene, I mean, their office was closed on New Year's Eve. And they were closed again today and Tom is also out sick. So Tom has not communicated with anybody in this room in reference to the letter that you received, including to code enforcement officer, John Cooper. So it's unfair for you to be asking the board and all of us as far as the content of that letter because we don't know what the conclusion of, of Tom's findings are and we can't answer on his behalf.
I agree with all of that. But I'm just really surprised that in a small town, that when we get a rejection letter from the legal, your legal counsel, you're saying your legal counsel gave a rejection to something that we applied for where it is completely against your own village code, which, which is a whole separate issue. But the fact that nobody knows about it when somebody sends a rejection letter and nobody knows about it is just really, really surprising to me. The fact that he sends that rejection letter and not a single person knows about it is surprising to me.
Well, the only one that, that Tom would really have to notify in that situation would be the code enforcement officer and possibly even, even myself about the, the letter going out. But I didn't find out about it until I received your correspondence from your council from Tom's letter.
That was the next day, yeah.
And that was on the 28th of December, if my timeline serves.
So what we would like is if this is an absolute rejection, we would like the code enforcement officer to say that it's been rejected and then we can take it in the appeals process. If that's the case. So, and we would like that in short order. Like if this is an absolute rejection, which is what he's done, then we need the code enforcement officer to basically say that it's rejected.
And, and I think Mr. Cooper will be reaching out to Mr. Rene. I can't speak on Mr. Cooper's behalf. But all this is such short notice. I mean, it, I mean, this just took place on, your letter came in on the, on the 28th of, of December. The 30th was, was a holiday for, for everybody because of.
I'm, 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 I totally understand that, but all I'm saying.
And, and I, and I did reach out to your secretary and I advised her of this such short notice that it would probably be best if you were to approach the board on the meeting on January 18th. And the other thing that I asked your secretary to relate to you as well is the fact is, you know, maybe it would be best if we had a special meeting and the special meeting take place at the, at the site, at 64 Maple and let the board do a tour of, of your plans and see everything that's actually going on.
Well, I mean, I'm only going into the site where we're going to be building new stuff. There's other stuff that I, I don't know about that stuff, right? But the fact is that you don't go and visit every single project you apply for. What is in your code?
And I, and we can't speak on the attorney's behalf. I don't know how, why he answered the, your permit the way that he did. So I can't give you that explanation.
Any other public comment?
I just have a quick question. Is agriculture allowed on the Old Wythe site? That was, I wonder if that was part of it?
As long as they do not break the ground and use the soil.
Gotcha.
So greenhouse would be allowed under the covenants of restriction placed on that site by law. Because they're not using the soil on the site itself. They're trucking in soil or using hydroponics.
And how many greenhouses did you say that you have built in the past?
Our strategic partner is Cornell and Cornell has been built.
No, you had said that you had done this in multiple other countries as well.
No, we did solar power in other countries.
You said greenhouses, numerous greenhouses.
No, I didn't, I didn't say that.
So you've never built greenhouses before?
I have not. But our strategic partners, like Cornell, they've done it. So we partner up with somebody who's done it.
I think that needs to be cleared in the village as well because you're really pushing that on the entire village that greenhouses are going to be amazing, it's going to be wonderful, however, you've never even built them before. And I also was a little bit concerned that, had you ever done this in the United States before? You've done it in other countries that perhaps have been corrupt. I'm not even sure about how those contracts have gone through. I know there's laws that you can't make certain contracts with corrupt countries. So a little bit concerning that this is going to be your first plan here in the United States.
This, this would be our second. And we're the same ones that are building a manufacturing plant in Watertown, New York.
And what's your progress in Watertown? What, what's been going on there? What, what ground have you sort of developed?
All the tools and equipment, all the investments have been done. We're just waiting for now the next phase. But anyway, look, we, we.
No, not anyway, that's, that's a valid concern for the village people that live here. What your intentions are.
And what is, what is your concern?
What I just said to you very clearly.
Okay, so Elon Musk did not invest in SpaceX. He didn't build a single thing before you went out and, and built SpaceX. He didn't invest in Tesla before you went out and visited Tesla. We invest in solar power. We have done solar power. We are constructing a solar power plant to make panels in America. Now, greenhouses use solar power. The vast majority of it is solar power and power that it's going to use. Now, we partner with somebody called a strategic partner who has done that. So we bring other people in who have done it with experience to tell us, hey, which, which crops to grow? What are the best? So we partner with somebody like a Cornell to do that. But other than that, we're investors. Most investors look at a decision, reinvest. We like greenhouses, we like solar power. Now, that's what we have to.
So you have a contract, you have a contract with Cornell specifically? Because I think that there was a press release back when it was stated that you were coming with regards that you were hoping to reach out and partner with them. But I don't know if there was anything solidified. Is that, it's, there's a contract with Cornell?
If we have a meeting on 18th, I'm happy to bring a representative from that, from them.
Okay.
Yep.
What's your name?
Can you, can you say your name again?
Ashley.
Ashley. Any other public comment? Any other public, Adam? Stand up and state your name again.
Hi.
Not again, first time.
Um, Adam, Adam Racine. It's more of a question than a comment, really. I'm just kind of wondering why, uh, why we have a company that's Harry's company. You know, spent all this time, effort and money to come to, you know, a small town in Rosas Point and propose investments up to $150 million into this town. And he's receiving nothing but pushback and a kick, so to speak, in the butt to get out. And I just don't understand why there's not a longing for more progress in the village of Rosas Point. I don't see a bank. I don't see a grocery store. I don't see waterfront access or a beach or any sort of business growth whatsoever. When I worked for Pfizer, um, it was different and there were 1,500 people there and 1,500 jobs. But, um, when they shut down, I transferred out from that facility here in Rosas Point to Andover and Cambridge, Massachusetts. And I came back to be closer with my family because I do love this town. I feel very bad and very ashamed at what I see when a legitimate international businessman like Harry has come here and is willing to invest all this money, time and resource into this town and bring in potentially hundreds of jobs and success for a town which is frankly dying. I just don't understand the logic. Like he said, he would already cover any costs of any power and utility rates, if at all, they went up. That would be taken care of by the solar issue. I just don't see this relentless attack on this man and this company for trying to start up and make something of the town that's been, you know, that I grew up in. It's just, you know, it's really, it's really sad. To be honest with you, I don't want to have to be put in that situation for myself again to have to move away to some faraway city because we've already got the people here, you know, that are going to make something of this community. And it just feels like they're being given the boot over the most absurd reasons I've ever heard. I just don't get it. And I hope that changes and I hope some logic comes and some thinking comes to this process. Because that Pfizer site, if it's not utilized the way Harry wants to utilize it, it's just going to remain rubble like Iraq and Syria for the long term. And I don't want to be around for that. And I know a lot of other people don't want to be around for that. And, you know, like I said, I grew up here and, you know, um, if that does happen, I think myself and a lot of other people will just leave this area once again because I see nothing, I see, I see no growth, I see nothing here. Very, very sad. So I, 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 I hope people can welcome this man and give him a proper welcoming and, you know, respect his wishes as opposed to, you know, treating it like some sort of criminal enterprise, which I can assure you, that's not the case at all. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Adam. Yeah?
Yeah, my, my name's Matt. I, uh, I got, your name was Adam? Yeah, just to continue on with what Adam was saying, I grew up in a very small town in Pennsylvania and we had an aluminum factory that busted out. The whole town is basically dead and it's very depressing. And whenever I go back, it's, uh, yeah, it's very sad. High, you know, drug, drug usage, all that, all that crap, it's just very sad. Uh, you know, I can't really, I don't, if I, you know, I can bring my kids there, but it's, you know, it's not something I want them to, uh, you know, see. And even that town has the good sense if they had a Harry or somebody coming in, they're going to grab him, they're going to embrace him and find a way to collaborate and work with him. And, you know, say thank you to him. So I just wanted to make that point. You know, there's a lot of news about small towns. It's real. This is, you know, it's happening in Rosas Point. And, you know, to the extent that, you know, Harry's investment can, you know, help turn that around in any direction, I think you guys should have open arms. That's all I have to say.
Mr. Mayor, you need the state to have the people who are speaking state who they are and their address for the record? Name and address, it's not just name?
Okay, so I was, Adam Racine, 34 Maple Street, Rosas Point.
Harry?
Harry Achethan.
I'm hoping someone can hear that, I'm sorry. Uh, the other speakers?
Steve Lambert, 22 Academy Street. 39 Montgomery Street.
39 Montgomery?
Man?
17 Dorset Road, Greenack.
17 Dorset, okay. I'm really hoping we can do something because, to be honest, if it doesn't turn around, I'm also not going to stay, so.
I'd like to say something. I've been the village treasurer for 36 years. And this is the first time in the 36 years that I've been here that a company has been approaching the board about business aesthetic going through the proper channels of going through the zoning board or whatever. I mean, to me, this, this whole forum that we're having tonight should be a totally separate board meeting, period. This is supposed to be our regular board meeting. I realize you can comment five minutes, but you're not supposed to go back and forth and engage with, with recipients and, and questions. And it's just not, it's just not the right forum to do this. And I just, I just don't understand why it's being done this way.
I don't understand why, it's something that was set. Because they sent that application in over a play month ago? More than a month ago?
Jed, it doesn't need to be discussed at this meeting. It needs to be discussed at a separate board meeting. If you want to have a separate board meeting, it needs to be discussed at a separate board meeting, not a regular village board meeting. This is too big of a topic to be trying to address in a regular village board meeting.
It should be the zoning board meeting.
Exactly.
Which you've never got.
And the village board should never be getting involved in it in the first place. But I know that's one of the problems.
Uh, my name is Todd Burke. I live at 32 Woodhaven Drive, Rosas Point. I am the chair of the zoning board of appeals. The zoning board does not undertake making a decision until the application is given to the zoning board to rule off. First step is the person applies for a permit. Maybe Mr. Cooper issues the permit or he does not. You cannot issue the permit if the person needs a special permit. And you cannot issue a permit if the person needs a variance. Those are the only circumstances in which. Those are the only circumstances in which it comes before the board for a board decision for the zoning board. So, I am not seized of that application at all. I'm aware that it was made because the clerk gave me a copy for information purposes, but it is not in front of the zoning board of appeals.
And that is that. I don't know what else can be said. Anything could be constructed at this point here. Minutes of December twentieth. Any questions about the minutes of December twentieth? Any changes to the minutes of December twentieth?
I make a motion, the minutes be accepted as printed.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution twenty-two twenty-two dash oh, one, call in place. Oh, I just skipped a few. Any questions, additions, or modifications to the bills, our senator?
No.
Any questions from the board about the bills?
I make a motion, that we pay the bills?
Aye, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Sonia Legu, uh, resignation? Would you like me to read this, Adam, or?
Uh, it doesn't matter to me. I received an email from Sonia Legu resigning as an alternate on the zoning board of appeals. Out of courtesy, I had the clerk print up a letter thanking her for her service, uh, on the zoning board. She was an alternate, not full member, but it would still be useful to have another alternate member to assure that we always have a quorum when issues come in front of the board. We usually have seven members, five permanent members, two alternates. We have the five regular members, now we only have one alternate, and that alternate spends the winter outside the village. So, I think it would be useful if there's somebody in the village who's interested in serving on that board, uh, for the village board, for useful, uh, to, to appoint. I can make recommendations, but it's not my authority to appoint people.
Okay. I make a motion to accept the registration and let it be known that we're looking for another alternate zoning board member?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution twenty-two twenty-two dash oh, one, call in place. Next village election is March fifteenth. Board of trustees of, whereas the board of trustees of the village must designate by resolution the call-in-place hours which the call shall open for section fifteen dash one oh four dash three B of New York State Election Law. Therefore be it resolved that the board of trustees of the village of Rousas Point has determined the call-in-place shall be the village of Rousas Point Rex Center, Halsted Hall located at thirty-nine Lake Street, Rousas Point, New York, but call is open from twelve noon to nine P M. And shall take effect immediately, the foregoing question duly put to roll call. Trustee Dale?
Aye.
Menard? Trustee Pelkey?
Aye.
Trustee Arno?
Aye.
Trustee Rodriguez is absent, and mayor votes aye. Okay, voter registration day, resolution twenty-two twenty-two dash oh two. Whereas the next year election for offices, uh, officers will be held on fifteenth of March. Due to the lack of activity in past registration days, village officials have decided not to hold a registration day for the fifth election twenty-twenty-two. Therefore be resolved the village board of the village of Rousas Point, twenty times in New York, as on the third day of January twenty-twenty-two, passed a resolution to not hold the voter registration day for twenty-twenty-two village election, shall take effect immediately. Trustee Menard?
Aye.
Trustee Doki?
Aye.
Trustee Arno?
Aye.
Trustee Rodriguez is absent, mayor votes aye. And, the chairman will remember to pick these up for me. So that way you got the signed ones. I've got nothing. Trustee Arno?
I'd just like to thank the guys for a job well done on the thing that the streets, after the stormstorm.
They did a nice job downtown.
Yes, they did. And also, I'd like to ask Mr. Cooper, have you heard any more on, uh, the building on Chapman Street?
We're working on that project now. We anticipated having something from Dave's lawyer today. It didn't arrive. I just checked my computer before I came to the meeting. I checked with Chris, he didn't receive any either, so we're going to pursue it tomorrow morning.
The, the issue at hand, Benny, is the asbestos report came back inconclusive, indicating that you have to assume that there's asbestos in it. So that is going to throw it into a different mode as far as for, um, for the, uh, for the teardown of, of, of the residence. And Dave is currently looking at obtaining three con, uh, three estimates to have the building tore down that are licensed for asbestos removal. And we're just waiting because Mr. Cooper did send the letter out advising him that as of January first, John?
On January the first, he's in violation.
He's in violation. Um, but with it coming back inconclusive, it's going to paint a little different picture. But we just want to find out from the attorney as far as what period of time would be reasonable to have them submit a signed contract for the removal of, of that property. So just put a little corruption everything for us.
That's all I have.
Is that fair, John?
Yeah. Smooth as gold.
Trustee Menard?
Yes. I have a letter I would like to read.
Oh, that's a news letter.
Huh? No, I have, I want to address the village resident. Dear village resident, I would like to address the executive, executive session that was recorded and put on YouTube by Mayor Thon without any knowledge from members of this board or our attorney. The mayor took it upon himself to record and post it on YouTube. This goes against every code of ethics and village law that we have. Mayor Thon may have opened this village up for many lawsuits and tremendous legal issues. I am here tonight representing the board members by saying that, as a board, we have lost confidence in Mayor Thon in any decision that he makes. Mayor Thon has put this village in a profoundly serious situation that could cost the village millions of dollars. Mayor Thon took an oath to uphold the laws of this village and state. Then he has done nothing but interpret these laws to fit what he thinks is right. Board members and the mayor adopt the village law. These laws are to develop, benefit the village residents. Village laws are what we in the village of Rousas Point live by, and that is what you residents elected this board to do. We must enforce these laws and make sure the village, village residents always come forth first. This board believes that Mayor Thon does not have the village residents' best interests in mind. This decision comes because of your continuous misconduct and deliberate ignorance of the village policies and regulations. Despite multiple warnings given to Mayor Thon and no progress has been made, for the best interest in the village, we at the board are requesting Mayor Thon to turn in his recognition before he causes any more damage. We regret that things have reached this stage, but we have already exhausted all other options. Thank you. And that's all I have.
If you truly believe that was intentional and everything else, I challenge you to remove me from office under New York State Constitution of Article Five. Go to the Supreme Court.
We can't, we can't remove you. We're asking for your resignation.
I'm not going to. A petition in the New York State Supreme Court will have a day in court. Because I did not do that intentionally. Under no terms did I do that intentionally. Trustee Pelkey?
I'm not losing today.
Rodriguez is not here. Any other reports?
I do have some additional reports. Mr. Juno came in the office today and he sent me an email, and, um, I'll read the email to you, and I just want to get consent of the board to send a letter over to, to ERS Building. After answering a question on a different topic from our engineer over at PLM, Matt, I was informed of the power usage being close to the maximum setting for the, uh, reclosure provided by ERS Building. The amperage for phase A, B, and C are five hundred and seventy-four, five hundred and seventy-three, and five hundred and eighty-one. Respectfully, he strongly suggests that the ERS be informed to not go above the usage they are currently at unless some modifications can be made on our end to allow them with more power. The higher usage due to the settings in our substation, reclosure may cause it to trip out, making them lose power completely. So at this point in time, I think we need to send them a letter just advising them that their usage is, is maxed out based upon, um, the village engineer at PLM, and if they continue to exceed that, it could cause that to trip. So I'd like to send them a letter with the consent of the, of the board.
I make a motion to send them the letter.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next.
The next thing that I, that I wanted to do is, um, I've been receiving some, some communication in reference to, um, some information being put on Facebook as far as, as far as their factual or not. So I just wanted to address this with the board. One of the things that came up in, um, the Facebook conversation is the fact that, um, the board has already, um, a, a solar manufacturing plant is not coming here because of the board's foolish mistakes. Now, Harry, the, um, solar manufacturing company is never coming to the village of Rousas Point, is that correct?
No, but I, I don't know what, yeah, this has nothing to do with us.
Well, for some reason, they think that because of the board, the, the solar manufacturing is not going to be coming into this, into this village, but it was never planned on the solar manufacturing to come into the village of Rousas Point.
Yeah, but it says a company, I don't think it says a company manufacturing. It wasn't.
Yeah, it says solar manufacturing plant. It's not coming here because of the foolishness of the board. It was always going to water down from much, what you told me, because you said that Rousas Point didn't have the, uh, the workforce available to support the manufacturing of solar chemicals, is that correct?
Well, I mean, even before we can even get to, uh, neighbor, I don't, I don't know whether the community wants us here in the first place, so forget about neighbor.
No, the, the question is, Harry, would you bring the solar manufacturing company to Rousas Point?
The entire company? No. Parts of it? Possibly, yes.
Okay.
It all depends on what this community wants.
But, but there's a misunderstanding out there in, in the Facebook world that-
I didn't write that, I don't know who wrote it, and I, I have no idea what that is. First time I'm actually hearing that something on Facebook.
Okay. The other thing that I, that I want to clarify, uh, Mr. Mayor, is the fact that it's, it's indicated that the, um, that the board or the village of Rousas Point will not pay the mayor for his travel expense for a recent outing you were on. Have you been reimbursed for that? And what was the, okay, and what was the reason behind you not getting reimbursed for your travel expenses?
The claim is that I was, that I had to and could only use the village vehicle, which is not what it says because if I had to only use that, well, you, you can't say a politician can only, and has to use a village vehicle. More, and I can't, that can't be forced upon an elected official any more than I can force training on an elected official.
But what is the, what is the village policy on that, Mr. Mayor?
Employees have to use the vehicle.
Okay, and what is the mayor?
I'm an elected official.
But essentially, you're still an employee of the village.
So that I can make the others take training? Because I'm told no.
Training towards?
Going to, what, uh, New York? NITOM training?
Yeah, I mean, there's certain officials that are obligated that would have to go to the NITOM training.
Yeah, but I can't force it.
No, you can't, you can't enforce it, but you can make recommendations for them to go. And not only that, but when you turn in a mileage sheet, if you do use your own vehicle, they only pay what's allowed by the, the, uh, federal law as far as it may be forty-three cents a mile.
Yeah.
They're not going to pay anything over and above the allotted amount.
And that wasn't asked any more than above the allotted amount.
Okay. But the reason-
I only claimed the mileage driven.
Okay. But were there other people from the village that went to that meeting?
No.
You were, was, was it, was the village vehicle available?
The village vehicle was there, yes, but I did not use it.
Okay.
Because I wanted to leave, leave it available, available in case someone else did.
Okay. But I just-
I was also trying to make phone calls with clients to see if I could get them, to see if they had a job for me to do on the way.
So you were incorporating business with that? You were incorporating your own business with that trip as well?
Yes, if, if someone had given me a job to do on the way, I would have never claimed mileage.
Okay.
Because I've done that before. If I've incorporated a trip to visit family or a trip to, to business, I never claimed. I made the attempt to incorporate something else into the trip so that way it wouldn't be claimed in the mileage. I didn't want to have a client call me up as I was driving, and then have, be in a position where it was like, either use the village vehicle to do it or turn it down. So I took my car. That way in case I got a call from a client saying, oh, we want you to do something in Boston, I could do that and then transfer the entire cost of the trip to, to the business and never have to charge a village anything for village trip.
So it wasn't only because you didn't want anybody else to use, somebody else to have the availability of that, but you were also using it because of the possibility that you may have to make your own business trip? Would that be fair?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
In addition to the, I don't want to take village resources in the way of the village hybrid where in case someone else needed to make a trip, like some department head or some, some department employee having to go down to Plattsburgh or some, something. I don't want them to be put into a position where they have to use their personal vehicle to do that trip. So I want to leave the resources like that hybrid available for the employees first and foremost. The only time I'm going to use that for a trip is if my car's broken or if I'm going to Plattsburgh because it's going to take me an hour.
Okay. But just for clarification, you, there was a possibility that you may have had to do some, your own business personal use of the, the vehicle?
Yes.
That wouldn't be compliant using the village vehicle? So you felt that was best to take your own personal vehicle?
Yes.
And the only other thing that I think that, that really needs to be clarified is the fact that there's a lot of debate as far as for the ERS building. And a lot of the people on, that are communicating with Facebook is, that they're saying that the board is against, um, the use of the ERS building because of the consumption of, of energy that's, that they're going to be consuming in that building. And I don't think that's a fair analysis of that. I think that the, the fair analysis at this point in time is the fact that, and I'm not referring to Harry's business at all, I'm referring to the two CSRI usages. We have a main obstacle that we need to, um, uh, hurdle over. The first obstacle is, so if it's a solar farm, which it may or may not be, we really don't know what's, what's in that building. A solar farm is against village local law. Laws are made through-
Let me correct you. A data farm. A data farm, not a solar.
Okay. Well, um-
Server farm.
Server.
Server, server farm. So server farm is against village local law. In order to get over that obstacle, the law would need to be amended. Can that be done? Possibly, but it's, it's, it's going to be up to the board. Is electricity a, a, a factor? Yes, electricity is becoming a factor. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, it is a factor because of the fact that this village has used a certain amount of power when Pfizer was here. And that amount of power, did everybody listen to that recording that took place on December fifteenth, was twenty-three mags of power? Okay, that twenty-three mags was, was a peak. It was a peak in, in the wintertime when the residents were using electricity, and then it peaked in the summertime when Pfizer was using its chillers to keep the plant at a, at a controlled temperature. The problem at hand is, in that building right now, that building wants to use twenty-three mags of power constant, and then all- And then over and above that is going to be the residents' consumption, which will be maximizing that substation. The high end of that substation has been rebuilt and is pretty solid. The other part of the substation has not had any, um, attention taken to it for a long time. And if part of that substation goes, it's going to affect all the village residents, not just one entity, but all the village residents. This is the topic and concerns that this board has at hand. So it's not a matter of them not wanting business to come into this village, because I think every single one of you sitting up there really wants business to come into this village. But we have to watch out as far as for the village residents, because if there's a brown out and we're unable to take another life to feed that brown out, somebody's gonna be without power for a period of time. And I don't know about you, but this time of the year, I don't wanna be sitting in the hole.
Can I comment on that? Am I allowed to or not?
Not really.
There's another public session, sure.
I mean, if, if I speak on a turn, um, any of the trustees, is, is there anything I'm saying that's, that's not factual or true? I mean, I, I, I think we just need to clear the air as far as for the, for the village residents and let them know that a lot of the, the things that they're seeing out on social media is not a hundred percent factual, and I encourage the residents to attend these board meetings and get it firsthand. And if they have questions, then they should come to the board and during the public session, ask the board to bring up these topics and conversations. Every single one of these board members would be happy to, uh, to listen to your concerns and, and, and address it. And I don't wanna speak on your behalf, so I apologize if I am, but...
I'm aware of that.
But, but I think that's what your elected officials are, are there to do. And, and, you know, I, I, I respect both Matt and Adam as far as what they've gone through and experienced, because everybody here has experienced when, when Pfizer left. And everybody that's been on the board since Pfizer left has been trying to do something to build Ross's Point back up to where it was and where they want it to be. They don't want it to be a ghost town like, like Adam was saying. They want to build it up so that the residents of this village will, will be able to stay here, and their families will continue to grow here, and it needs to be a safe community for everybody. That's all I had, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
No other reports?
No other reports.
Cooper, any other report?
No, just as we reported about the forty-three, forty-five cabin, that's what's, we're dealing with it. And we're waiting for the, for, actually for the attorney to give us, I'll go ahead to help out with Harry's project, but, uh, I assumed he would be here to remind when we'd have that report, but we'll have to propagate it later.
Director, any other report?
No.
Public session again? Stand up, say your name and address.
Charbin Burtz, thirty-five Montgomery Street, Ross's Point. You were talking about social media and Facebook, and it sounds like there's a lot of stuff that's coming through that's not reliable, not, you know, it's not factual. Where's it coming from? Is it town people? Can we correct it? Is it the people of authority?
Um, some of it is coming from, from people of authority that, that are on the board, yes. And it's, um, one of the individuals that was brought out to, to my attention, um, where I had this conversation, is that it was Jed is communicating on this.
None of those comments were mine, but I remember those.
No, but you, you are, from what they're telling me, you, you are responding to some of this communication?
It sounds like that's the big problem.
It is.
You know, and if, if this information is coming out in social media, and the people in the town don't come to the meeting for whatever reason, are digesting it, believing it, we don't have any recourse to say, does he know what he's talking about? What's the feedback? You know, is somebody on top of it? To me, that's the scary part.
And that's why I wanted to bring it up to everybody's attention, that, you know, social media is great for certain things, but for things like this right now, it's probably not the best means of, uh, of giving you information.
Mr. Mayor, why are you doing that? You know, if it's causing unrest amongst the people in the village, talk to the board members. You know, don't feed the people without facts. And if you have facts, you need to know about it.
I don't know what comments you're specifically, anyone specifically referring to?
I think some of them have been brought up.
Well, I just asked if any of those comments were mine, because I don't recall making those specific comments, and you said no.
You, you responded in that, in the chain to those questions. Like, one of the, one of the, um, questions as far that came up that, that was brought to my attention as far as if there were any positions up for election this year, you indicated yes, two trustees and the mayor. And correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Mayor, but did you indicate that if you were to get reelected and two of the trustees were up, got reelected, then you were going to resign immediately?
Yes.
You did say that?
Yes.
Now, how beneficial is that?
Well, how beneficial...
In view of what happened tonight, in view of the letter, and you stand there and you, and you make these comments on social media, trying to rip the town apart?
Well, in view of this letter, if I win, how can I serve at this board?
I don't know how you can serve now.
But this is not the time to discuss that. Like, things like, like that, Jed, you, you are the mayor, you are holding public office, and you, you shouldn't be making comments like that.
I did. And a panel, and the comment wasn't a lie.
Well, I'm just saying, hold the professionalism of the office, please.
Yes? State your name, address.
Steve Lambert, twenty-two Cathy Street. It seems to me that the village needs a better way to communicate. The board needs a better way to communicate, to, uh, put down a lot of these rumors. I don't do Facebook because of that. I mean, people will say things on Facebook that they won't say to your face. And so I think there, there needs to be a better way to communicate out of this board so that the village, anybody in the village who does, doesn't do Facebook can find out facts. And I don't, I don't know what that solution is, but, um...
Come to the board meeting.
Come to the board meeting.
Come to the board meeting.
Yeah.
I'm not on Facebook neither, I don't believe in either Facebook.
And if there's something on Facebook that you believe isn't true, then ask the board, and we can pave the truth.
Yeah.
Yes?
Um, Ashley, thirty-nine Montgomery Street. I'm just hoping, Mayor, that you can give us a better answer, other than, I don't know what happened with, with the airing of a private conversation that now the village all knows about, and, and I think what you own the grunt pilot spot, it's like a remote control...
Drone pilot, something, I guess.
And I think you're very proficient on Facebook. I'm so confused how that can just easily happen. You can just, out of all the meetings, out of all the meetings that you've been mayor, how did that happen? I mean, and to say, I don't know. I don't know if I could operate, you know, the, what you do with a grunt pilot, but I'm not sure I can do that, but I know how to turn my phone off, and I know how to keep it away from my hands, so I don't record a conversation. That's confident, especially being a mayor of a village where we rely on you to take the oath of doing the right thing.
And I don't know if I knew how...
I think we deserve a little bit more than I don't know what happened. I mean...
Well, if I knew how it happened, then I would've done it intentionally. I don't know for, how the, I don't know. I don't know why, I don't know how. My cell phone hotspot wasn't on, so I guess, the only thing I can do is speculate.
Mayor, do you understand how that here, how that sounds?
Yes, I do know how that sounds.
With...
But I'm not going to lie to you and tell you I know exactly how it did it, cause I don't.
I hope you wouldn't lie.
Yeah. I don't know how it happened or why, I don't.
But only part of the executive session was recorded. That's what stumps me.
And again, if they think, if this board thinks I did that intentionally, then their choice is to petition the New York State Supreme Court for my removal, then we can have a day in court and have, and fight it over. Cause that's the only way. Cause I did not do that intentionally.
Now, I just, I was informed that part of that executive session had been recorded erroneously. Somebody called me and said, Pat, you need to know this. I checked to see if indeed it was recorded. I immediately called Chris to tell him what had happened. He was not there electing a message. I then sent a text to the mayor. Jed, you need to know this happened. He acted, unless he's a good actor, and I don't really think he is, he was pretty shocked. He said to me, the board is gonna crucify me. He was very upset. I think that if you're gonna continue to make comments, also, I'd like to hear your last name. Everybody else has identified themselves, uh, completely...
It's Burtz, B-I-R-T-Z.
Oh, I know how to stop.
Okay.
So I just wanna make that point, that I, I don't see why this is being aired here. Jed has said what he believes is a legal recourse, if people believe he did something improper or illegal, we're not gonna solve it tonight. As for Facebook, the reason there's so many comments on Facebook, I believe, is because the meetings are publicized on YouTube by Calvin Passine, and the mayor has streamed them on Facebook. So people are listening to them on those two sources, and from there, speculating and drawing their own conclusions or understanding or misunderstanding, and from there, there's been a lot of public discussion. That may not be a bad thing. This has never been such an open process as when everybody, even if they're not able to come to the board meeting, can nevertheless hear what happened at the board meeting. I think it is perhaps a good thing, certainly stimulate understanding in the village that there are a lot of complex issues up for decision, and not everybody sees it the same way. That's okay. They may need more information, and people will make their decisions, but it's an open process.
And they're actually streamed on YouTube and linked to Facebook. Cause I can't set that thing up to stream to YouTube and Facebook at the same time. But, yeah, thank you, Pat. Any other public comments? Yes?
Very quickly, I wanna address the comments from Chris. We're caught in between the village, ERS, and we're stuck in the middle, and whatever it's, and whatever it is, I'm not gonna have a fight, right? If you guys are concerned about too much power that ERS system's doing, I've said this before, stage it, work it out with them. Instead of giving them twenty-four, give them fourteen, bridge it. We're here as business people to come into the city to help the village, I'm sorry, the village, to invest in the village, create employment, and, and, and hopefully that works out for everybody, right? But I don't wanna get caught in the middle of whatever's going on. We don't wanna get caught, and all we can say is be reasonable and work it out. So if you think twenty-four's too high, maybe they'll settle at fourteen. I don't know. But have the conversation so everybody can move on, and the village can benefit from what we can bring here. That's all I can say. This is not, this is not a, you know, all or nothing game. I think if we all put our heads together, we can do that. This is not complex, this is not rocket science, you're not trying to put something up on the moon, this is not a complex. And I think I've told you this before in the last meeting that we had, I'm happy to bridge whatever conversations need to be done between the village and the ERS, I'm happy to bridge it, and I've also said this before, whatever investments need to be made in the substation to protect that substation so that you don't have outages, and the chance of an outage is very rare in today's circumstances, but whatever needs to be done, those investments can be made. So all I say again is, this is not all or nothing. There, there is a conversation to be had that can be bridged, and that can lead to investments in this town. That's all I can say.
Any other public comments? Make a motion to adjourn? Yep, there's no call for executive sessions. I'll second your motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.